Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
You're good? Yes, and have you started streaming yet? Okay. Okay. I would like to call to order the Monday, November 21st meeting of the City of Manona City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Holmberg?
Here.
Alder Moore?
Here.
Alder Wood?
Here.
Alder Thomas?
Here.
Alder Radmacher?
Here.
Alder DeBulock?
Here.
Mayor O'Connor?
Here. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the November 3rd and November 7th meetings? I'm sorry, we have a, oh no, we'll go ahead with the approval of the minutes of the November 3rd and November 7th meeting, then we have some appearances.
Move approval.
Second.
Any corrections or additions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Minutes are approved. We have two appearances tonight. The first is Elizabeth Nelson, local chapter of the MDA, accepting a donation from the Manona Fire Department's Fill the Boot campaign.
I'm going to speak up on Zoom here and apologize.
Oh, okay.
I have conflicting meetings tonight, so I wasn't able to make it. My crew was going to be there, but they're unfortunately on a call right now. So before Ms. Nelson presents the check, I just want to give a public shout out to all of my staff. This is spearheaded by Local 311, which is our fire department union folks, but our entire department helps out with this. So between volunteers and full-time staff, part-time staff, we were able to do this every year. I want to give them a public thank you for putting in the time to be able to make this happen. So again, I apologize for not being there in person, but I wanted to say that publicly.
Okay. Ms. Nelson?
Thank you. Thanks to you. You owe me one. So I'm Elizabeth from MDA. I'm sorry.
There's a mic right behind you.
Yeah, there's a mic right behind you.
I'm Elizabeth from MDA. Just wanted to come in here tonight and thank you all so much for your support of the Fill the Boot program that's been going on here in Manona for several years. They do it every year in September in conjunction with the Badgers game, and we raise an incredible amount of money in just a couple hours on the intersection, and we really couldn't do that without you guys and your support every single year. That money means so much to us here at the Muscular dystrophy association. We serve over 2,000 families here in the state that are currently battling a neuromuscular disease like ALS, and we're able to do that with the donations, some things like the Fill the Boot program. We've had 19 drugs approved in the last seven years to help treat different forms of neuromuscular diseases, which is incredible. I started here 15 years ago and we had none of that. So the pipeline is really starting to move really quickly. That's because of the dollars raised, and we can invest back into research and helping our families. We also had summer camp come back this year, which was in Kenosha. So local kids from across the state were able to come to camp for the first time since COVID, which was really incredible to see all them back. Add it having a week full of free restrictions and free of charge to our families as well. So the kids get to attend camp for a week, there's no charge to families. The dollars raised also helps support that. In addition to our clinic visits at over eight different clinics here in the state of Wisconsin, three right here in the Madison area that our families can attend for free four times a year. I have a little one, so I think we all know how great it is to try and schedule seven or eight different doctor's appointments for our kids if they need them. Our clinics are multidisciplinary, meaning our families sit in one room and all of the doctors and specialists come to them. It's a very long day, but it's a really amazing thing that we can offer our families. They don't have to stress out about making a cardiology, a neurology, a physical therapist appointment, all those appointments, they can all happen in one place, and we fund those clinics. We clean for the nurses, the doctors, everything. So that's all, all those dollars being raised are going towards. I also do, I'm sorry that the crew had to go on a call, but you know, that's a little bit more important. But Brian Swatler from Manona has been our coordinator for, since I've been here for over 15 years. He's fantastic. He does all the coordinating for the department. He has to put up with me, which is no easy, which is no easy job to do. But this year, the department raised $16,000, $16,800, which is really incredible. I want to give a shout out to the department. The department actually raised $11,800, but we had Uche and Morra kick in some sponsorship dollars this year, so they actually picked in another $5,000. So this is the best year I've worked for Manona Fire Department, which is really impressive. And like I said, it doesn't happen with the support from you all here in this room. So thank you so much for allowing us to do this every year. Thank you to the community for coming out every year and being so supportive and supporting our, we have a lot of local families here in the Madison area that really look forward to this. So thank you all so much, and I will let you get to the rest of your meeting. And thank you, Chief. See you soon.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Yeah, you're very welcome, and I always contributed money to that. I had no idea that that's the amount of money they raised.
Yeah, it's a really impressive, they actually, they actually raised more than the City of Madison Fire Department.
Really?
A little something for you guys to put on your hat here in Manona.
Wow, all right.
Absolutely. So thank you guys so much. You guys are one of the top departments in the state, too. So.
Cool. Well, thank you. I'm sure Jerry will pass all that on.
Thank you. And thank you, happy Thanksgiving. Thank you so much.
Thanks, you too.
Thanks for coming, sport.
What do you say? You're welcome. Sounds like it.
Okay, we have one appearance, and Rick, I think if you want to go back to the lectern, we just had. Whichever, if you'd like to sit there, too. Yes. Rick Bernstein would like to speak about the Frank Alice House.
I'd like to take back the phone. So as many of you know, I live in Manona. I've been here 12 years, and my background is in historic preservation, and my concern is with the Frank Alice House. I know it's vacant, and I know some thought and plans have been made to protect it while it's abandoned and while the city decides what it wants to do with the house. But these are some other considerations that I just thought I'd put down on paper, and I'd like to see these being considered in terms of mothballing the Frank Alice House. I do remember I went through the Graff Ismus report, and there was a lot of bat guano up in the attic, and that should probably be cleaned up. I know there is plans to keep the heat on, but I just want to make sure that the heating system itself is being maintained and that there won't be any kind of accident where the system would fail and there would be no heat in the house. And if we're talking about fire, we might want to check the electrical wiring to prevent any possible accidents. If the wiring is antiquated, it might also cause an accident. And one of the preventatives that might be considered is having the fire department just walk through the house so that if there is a fire, they might better be able to deal with it and prevent unnecessary loss. I've seen where that has been very helpful with some fires in the state. Also ventilation is an ongoing issue, and there may be ice bridges or some kind of freezing in eaves if there isn't proper ventilation. I don't know, last time I looked, the gutters hadn't been cleaned, so there's always the possibility that it could be water spilling out of the gutters and falling towards the basement and seeping in, which causes moisture. And there is some wall failure in one of the basement walls, and that would probably only get worse if there aren't some ways of preventing that water from getting in. And again, the Graff Ismus report on page 40 talked about preventing that water seepage into the basement by diverting the water, especially in that area that has a negative grade into the front of the house. There are ways of installing sensors on the floor of the basement that would alert you with an email or a text if there is flooding in the basement. So it's a very simple, inexpensive object. You could put on several points on the basement. And those are my suggestions.
Thank you. I do know that at least some of this has already been done, and I did tell Mr. Bernstein at the beginning of the meeting, he wasn't aware that the heat was on, but I know that we've, are in the building quite frequently, and I know there's some sensors there, and I guess Jake would have to answer. We can talk to Jake later about what of this has been done, but I think we're certainly aware of keeping an eye on the house this winter, and we'll be in and out of there all the time, so. But I thank you for this list of suggestions.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, can I address the concern about the fire department real quick? We have walked through the building.
You have walked through the building?
Absolutely. Well, before it was open to the public, myself and Assistant Chief Beck Koch took a long, long look at the building from top to bottom, so we have been through it.
Great.
Good, good to know. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, item E1, we have a public hearing to receive public input regarding the proposed 2023 operating budget. Is there anyone here who would like to speak who hasn't turned in a form to speak about the operating budget? Doesn't appear to be anyone online. Okay, well, since there apparently isn't anyone, I will declare the public hearing closed. There is no consent agenda. Council action items, first item under G1 is unfinished business. Item A, consideration of resolution 22-11-2603, adopting the 2023 operating budget and establishing a tax levy put forth by the mayor. So is there a motion to approve the 2023 operating budget?
Motion to approve.
A second.
A second. We do have several operating budget amendments, and I'm going to go through the first two, which you saw last week first, Doug, and then I'll let Alder Wood address the remainder. Number 23-01, to increase donation revenue by $15,000, the Friends of San Damiano will donate $15,000 to cover the operating expense at the park. Is there a motion to approve this?
Move approval. Second.
Any discussion? Questions?
I have a procedural question. Are we going to go through each amendment and vote on each amendment prior to hearing all of the amendments?
The first two we are, and then Doug, Alder Wood is going to explain the remainder before we vote on them, because there's different ways we can handle those. So this first, we're doing number one and two, they're basically technical amendments, just making some corrections in the budget.
And the change here is covering the expenses, but does it increase the gap? Does this take away from what was already assigned for levy?
No. No, it's net zero.
This one's net zero.
It's net zero.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Going on to amendment 23-02, to increase EMS professional development by $6,000 to be paid for out of the EMS fund balance. Is there a motion to approve this?
I move to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Does anybody have any questions about this? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Thank you. Alder Wood, I'm going to let you explain your amendments.
Yeah, so as you probably know, we're subject to the levy limit, and that limit is determined next year, it'll be determined on what the levy is this year. Currently, I think we're about $10,000 below the levy limit. So the idea of these amendments is to, basically to spend the allowable amount so that next year we'll be able to have that base, that additional $10,000 to build on. Because it's not going to, we don't expect, I think, much increase at all next year. So with these, if you go actually to, up to number seven, the one that Mark handed out, I think it makes some sense to take that one up first.
And the one he handed out is slightly different from the one that was in your packet?
Which is number seven.
Number seven.
Yeah. Just for kicks, can you tell us what page you're on? Since this is 300 and some odd pages?
Number seven, you should have a separate page on your, that Mark handed out tonight.
Amendment seven is on page 20. So this, this amendment, if we, this would raise wages for non-ALM reps by half a percent. I think that would be, you know, money well spent, and the staff would appreciate it. If we adopt this, then we would not be going back and taking up my other amendments, because there wouldn't obviously be any money left, basically. So.
So do you want us to comment on this one, or do you want to go through all of them? Because if we pass this, then we don't need to go through the rest of them.
Yeah, I think that was my thought, was that we would take this one up first, and then if it does not pass, then we could go back through, one by one, through the others.
Okay.
Alder Thomas? Well, we should probably have a motion, then.
I'll move to approve amendment 23-07, to increase wages for non-reps by 0.5%.
Second.
Okay. And Kathy, did you have something, want to talk about it?
I just, I favor this amendment, because we already have staff who are, you know, in comparison to other cities are below, and we just fall further behind. We are expecting more and more of them, and it is, this is by no means a big raise, but it goes ways, goes to help more adequately compensate staff for their workload. So I'm very much in favor of this amendment.
Anyone else have any comments, questions? Brian, did you have something?
We can, we're going to go through all the other ones, correct?
Well, we have a motion on this one, so I think we'll go through all the others if...
That was my question earlier.
Right. And originally, I thought we were going to go through them all, but...
So the only way we could go through the others would be if we...
If we vote this one down. So otherwise, we can certainly have, we can...
We can go through and then go back.
We can go through and then go back to this one and vote on it, if you like. Okay, Doug, you want to start with three?
Okay. So 2303 is to put $500 in the law enforcement budget for community events. There had been $500 this year, I believe, and was cut to zero. I don't know if you want, you want staff to talk about these at all, or?
Sure, if you want to.
If you want to, I think, Chief, you said that you were planning to get that money from some other fund, as I recall.
Hello, Mayor, that's correct. If this wasn't funded through operating budget, which I requested it be, we would be, I would be soliciting donations.
I thought there was some fund, some police fund you mentioned.
There is an organization that we would reach out to that helped us for National Night Out. There's no guarantee that we're going to receive that funding.
Okay.
I told the chief that I would help him raise money. I think we can get, since these are community events, I think we can get donations from the community and fund it that way.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for the chief about this? Okay, Doug, you, thank you, Chief. Doug, you want to move on to the next one?
2304 is, this would add money for professional development, $1,200 in law enforcement, $200 in streets administration, and $1,000 in library professional development. And for highways and streets and the library, it's the same as it is currently. The police professional development would actually go up. I think the chief had talked about the need for that when he went through the operating budget.
Anyone want to add anything about that, of you three?
I mean, my, part of the reason I focused on professional development funds is they seem to always be, it's like the first place people go to cut in their budgets.
There's not a lot when it's, when you can only cut non-personnel items, you know?
Right, yep.
Ryan?
Good evening. I'll just quick speak regarding the library. Again, yeah, that was made a cut kind of based on necessity. However, since the pandemic, we have been finding a lot more resources online, which tend to be cheaper when it comes to professional development. My staff and myself, being librarians, we do do a lot of research, looking to see what we can find. The cut made, again, was due to necessity. If this amendment passed and got that back, it would be spent for professional development. I would say in an easier fashion and less staff time taken to research to find more professional development available, either for free or less dollars. Regardless, though, the staff would continue for, on professional development, so.
And they could use their fund balance, couldn't they, for the library?
If approved, yes.
Yeah. To make up for it. Chief, did you have something to add?
Just for the police department, just as a reminder to council, what comes out of that line item for us are things we need for our new hires. So we have currently two retirement eligible officers, not to say that they're going to retire, we think they might, but they haven't given notice. And what's, what we pull from that line item are things that are required for state certification, such as psychological evals, physical evals, as you can imagine, those cost quite a bit. So that takes away from what you probably would traditionally think we would spend professional development funds for, because it's all out of the same line item. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan, did you have anything to add?
Okay, and then 05 is to add $500 to the library programming line, which I would also restore it to the 22 level. I don't know, Brian, if you wanted to talk about that, then I actually had a question to ask you, too.
So again, that was taken out due to necessity to meet budget. We do have the Friends of the Library, as well as some funding from the foundation that could be applied towards some of the programming, so I was going to take a look and use those dollars to make up that gap. Excuse me. I do not anticipate programming to be lessened at all for the next year. That is the one consequence of having less city dollars towards it, but I feel confident that I think we can scramble and cover it for this next year, using some of those donation dollars.
Thank you.
So then, I'll put you on the spot.
Right.
Do you think you or your staff would rather that we provide the additional half percent raise or fund the programming and the professional development?
So speaking as department head of one department for the city, I would say that the, if it was my choice, I would vote for the extra half percent. Looking at, again, just specifically with libraries, I don't look into other, my colleagues field, for good reason. We are underpaid comparatively to our neighbors, and I think every year, there's the potential for that to increase. So any, any, excuse me again, any help this body can do to help with that, I know I would appreciate it for my staff, and I believe my staff would also very much appreciate it.
I'm shocked to hear that. Doug, do you want to talk about the other, the senior remaining amendment? Diane is on Zoom.
Right.
Thank you, Ryan.
So this would, obviously, as it says, provide an additional $3,000 total for senior citizens, senior services to the, for contracted services, the senior program expense, which I think is, they're just experiencing a lot of inflation in the cost of those programs, and then also in the home chore program.
Diane, did you have anything to say about that?
Sure, so I can just add to that. Obviously, with our programs, I was explaining to Doug that it seems like post-pandemic entertainers and speakers, I think they lost a lot of opportunity, so their prices are much higher, and anything's higher. So refreshments and programming supplies are higher in cost. The other two line items, though, are Newbridge. They basically are personnel for contracted senior services from Newbridge. So this is always a tricky part, it's a huge part of our budget, but they're also to pay the salaries of social workers. So already a low-paid industry, and they're experiencing the same thing that our staff are, where they're having a hard time competing. So the more they need to rehire, because people are finding higher-paying jobs, the longer our seniors have wait lists for case management. That same question posed to me, though, regarding the half percent or these increases, I would probably vote for the half percent. My staff are super valuable. To have to replace them, if they found something that paid them more, would be really challenging for our department of, you know, two and a half staff. So, you know, we try to make the best with what we can have in the city, so whatever's decided, we'll make the most of it.
Thank you. Alder Thomas? You're on mute.
So that, just like the library, we have a Friends of the Senior Foundation, and if there are needs for those things, we're doing the budget, and we are always willing, I mean, our purpose is to benefit the senior center program. So, I mean, we help pay for the new part of, the new dishwasher, and if we need to do it for programming and chore, we bought, we did a program this year, we can do that, we can do, if, I mean, if Diane comes and makes a request that she, you know, feels that she doesn't have anyplace else to go to get the resources, we're always amenable to that. So I think that if there is a need that comes up at the senior center, we can meet that. We can't give people a raise, staff a raise, but we can pay for programming and chore service and things like that. Same thing, I think, with the Friends of the Library. We can't pay staff, but we can fill in on some of the other items so that the city could increase, use the money to pay for staff increases.
Doug?
Yeah, I agree with all that, and I will, when we get to it, we'll vote in favor of the raise. But, I mean, I do think it's problematic to, you know, identify services, activities that we think we should do and not fund them, and have to sort of go out hand, you know, hat in hand to raise the money. It's, to me, not probably a real sustainable, long-term strategy, but we may be, I think we're in a spot where, yeah, I think we're in a spot where we don't, you know? There's a lot of choices that aren't...
Yeah. Tight spot. I think, Mark, just, I mean, we, these were proposed by the departments, right? We didn't go in and, I don't recall, cutting all these little bits and pieces.
We didn't.
Programming money, I mean, this is what we got from the proposal, from the committees.
Yeah, their job was to come back to the 0%.
Right. And we did, I know in the past, I've heard from Alders that when we didn't have any money left for them to do anything with at the end of the budget allocations, that they would like to have some money to make some decisions about, so that's partly why we left the $10,000 here, so that you guys can make a choice, I guess. Nancy?
Yeah, so just, Doug, to go back to, now that we're seeing all of these in total, like, for instance, the professional development lines. In the interest of not singling out any, I mean, it appears that you've singled out three departments as opposed to other departments in making the amendment.
Right. So I may have missed one, but what I tried to do was find ones that had gone down in, from 22, and to restore those to that level, except for PD, where I was proposed, I think, $1,200 increase.
Okay.
I don't think there are any others that have that went down.
Okay. So it's, it's, so none of the other departments, if they're not listed here, they're at 2021 levels?
Yeah.
Or 22 levels, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Alder Homequist?
Diane, are you still with us?
Yes.
There she is.
Yep.
I wanted to make sure. So if I remember right, our contracted services with Newbridge, this amount, the budget amount without the amendment is what we left the committee with, and it was an increase over last year's. It was meeting the essentially the similar cost of living raised that Newbridge was offering their employees.
That is true. The increase in the proposed budget is, I think it was a 3% increase, because they were expressing that they are already so far behind, and they're constantly rehiring because they're finding other other positions. Let me just confirm that. Yep. So senior committee did approve the 3% for just the contracted senior services.
And that's reflected in the mayor's budget that was brought forward without this amendment, correct?
Correct.
And then secondly, was the home chore. I wanted to remember, this is the line item, although it is an increase in comparison to the last few years. If you go back, I don't know, four years, it's roughly the same. But a big chunk of that was there weren't as many volunteers that were able to fill the roles for home chore?
Right. So I think they've, Newbridge proposed it at the same level. I'm guessing because they want more money to go toward salaries for their staff, and home chore is really just one coordinator. And some of this money goes toward paying for services for seniors who cannot get a good match of a volunteer. So hoarders or heavy smokers, it's not really appropriate to put a volunteer in there to do a house cleaning or something like that. So I think that was their justification for keeping that neutral. But again, that was the proposal from Newbridge. So, yeah, the thousand, the extra thousand for home chore, I'm sure that they would use it for the services that they pay for when they can't find a senior volunteer to help somebody in their home.
And if I look back at this year, we're not, we're not capping out at that. It's not like services aren't being provided because we're hitting a budget shortfall in that area currently.
I think that you might be thinking of the RSVP, the Drive, the Driver Coordination Program. This number does look low on this to date. Well, I don't think that there's anything in this, on that, in that line. But they've, they've been kind of keeping up with, when I try to keep up this time of year, to see if they're going to use all of their budget money, and they're probably going to use all of that home chore budget money in 2022.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, so we have a motion on the floor for the.
I have one more question. It's about actually amendment number four.
Okay.
And Mark, it actually has more to do with you. So as the chief was explaining, the PD for, the professional development line for PD for new hires comes from this line. If we didn't make an increase in that line, and there was a need, where would we find that fund?
It'd be changing the fund balance, in a way, to find some account that's not been used 30 years.
So it'd either be reallocated from something that's, we got a little bit of extra, or we'd have to take a fund balance.
Kind of hard to predict.
But we would have, we would end up doing that regardless. Like, we, we'd have to do.
Anyone else?
And just to be clear, the balance that we, I mean, the wiggle room that we have, if you will, is $10,300. But Doug took some money out of the interest income line as well to cover the salary increase, because it's comes to $12,438.
I think it actually, if we, Mark said we could increase the, the estimated amount for interest income.
Yeah, of interest, yeah.
So it's not, yeah.
So that'd be an income.
So it truly isn't either or?
It's either number seven or the other, right, four, right?
Right.
So we have, number seven is on the floor. There's a motion and a second. And do we need a roll call for this?
Probably not.
Not for amendments?
Not for amendment. Any other questions about number seven, which is the pay raise? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion passes. So then I think, Doug, do you need to withdraw your other amendments, or?
They were never amended.
Pardon?
They were never amended.
They were, well, that's true.
As long as they're not moved.
Okay. All right. Okay. So that brings us back to the budget as a whole, as amended. And we do have a motion and a second. So do we need another motion for as amended, because we just made the motion to pass the budget as it was?
No, because they, it's already amended.
Because the amendments are, okay, all right.
The move, you can throw out the motion.
Okay, all right. Okay. So the motion has been made and seconded to approve the budget. All in favor, say aye. I guess we'll have a quick call, a roll on that one.
Alder Moore?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Alder Radamacher?
Aye.
Alder DePula?
Aye.
Alder Holmquist?
Aye.
Budget is approved. And Mark, could you just tell us what what does that leave us, like, for the tax bill for a median and average assessed home?
Average, it is $146 for a median assessed home.
$136?
$146.
$146?
Yes.
And that's for the median assessed home?
Yes.
And, and that is?
What is the median value?
$351,500. And then the average is, what, 423 something?
428,700.
And what was, what would be the increase on that? 182.
Can you say those numbers again?
182 for the average assessed homes.
Which is on page 13 of the budget book.
I'm sorry, forget it.
Well, it went up a little bit from what it said in the book.
Yeah, it was 17974. And remember, this increase also covers the debt service. So it isn't just the 90,000 increase spender, or 99,000 increase spender. Any other questions for Mark? Mark, is there anything else you wanted to add?
No, final mill rate. I don't know if you need this in the amendment.
Did you have that?
Resolution is a number.
Right.
635?
No, I just need the resolution, so we need to fill that in.
Oh.
Because I think I have the resolution.
The property tax levy required to finance the 2023 budget is blank, and the tax rate to be established at blank per $1,000.
Yeah, number two. So the budget is, is 9,525, $9,525,257, and the mill rate is 6.362242. For $100,000.
$3,000, right.
Yeah, assessed.
Sorry, 6.36?
6.362242.
All right, thank you. As compared what was last year, that's down from last year.
6.57.
6.57. Any other questions for Mark?
Yeah. So the mill rate went down from last year because there's more mills.
Right.
There's more assessed values.
Assessments went up.
Assessment, assessed values went up, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? All right, hearing none, we will move on to the second item on Unfinished Business, consideration of resolution 22-10-2600, accepting the City of Manona Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA Park Transition Plan, for the Parks and Recreation Board. Is there a motion to accept this?
So moved?
Second.
Jake?
Good evening. In your packet, the only thing that's changed from last meeting is a spreadsheet that kind of lists the priorities of the different parks in the years proposed. I would just note that this is like a living, breathing document that will be updated yearly as to where we're at. So it's not meant to be like a set in stone. We will be doing these projects back to state. This is just kind of where our Parks Board prioritize the different projects, the different parks each year as we can get to some of these repairs. And if budget allows, we will continue updating and report back to this council.
Any questions for Jake?
Only a comment. Just looking through these documents in the last two packets, especially the final pages with the photographs and just all the detail, it's, it's incredible, the amount of work that has gone into this plan. It's really impressive.
It was money well spent.
What was, do you know about what the contract was?
$24,000.
Yeah, wow.
It's, it's a lot of time and referencing all the, I mean, if you looked at the ADA law, the Title II, it's incredibly confusing. There's no way that we could do that internally as staff and going through all the different measurements and slopes and referencing it. So it's going to be a very useful document for us to kind of reference as we're going through these one by one.
Yeah. Another thought that comes to mind is just how it changed, me personally, reading through these documents, how it opens my eyes to just the smallest of things I wouldn't have considered to, to cause, you know, to put a little hurdle in someone's path. It's, it's really, it's very eye opening. And as the city looks to move to implement the DEI plan, I think this is a great move in the right direction.
Anyone else? I appreciate you getting the rankings of the park board. I decided, Doug?
Jake, what's the significance of the yellow shading?
Oh, yeah, thanks.
The Schaefer was in late ad. The other ones were, I think, ones that I put notes in if we were going to be combining with a new project, or if it was proposed in one of the capital budget years that that I had added notes to from what the consultant had put in.
On page 33, where Winnequa Park starts, there's just, there were a lot of rows in yellow that sort of had the same question Doug just asked. So are you, are you saying that any cell in yellow just represents?
Yeah, I think that the Winnequa Park is all the, those yellow are the Schaefer shelter. So in the original first go around, that area was missed.
Got it.
So it was added at the end. So I just highlighted it because a lot of those items will be addressed in the capital budget, capital project for next year.
Got it.
Anyone else?
I guess I'm just curious how these dollar amounts, in terms of like, the cost of the solution, are those just rough estimates at this point?
Correct. Those are estimates from the consultant, and I won't put a lot of consultant to most of those.
Okay, yeah. Thank, that makes me feel good to hear you say that. Okay.
And some of these would be staff time. We wouldn't necessarily be hiring someone to do it.
Yeah, okay.
A fair amount of these smaller ones, aren't they, things that you, your staff would be doing?
Correct. There's a lot of replacement of mirrors, salt dispensers, grab bars that we'll, we'll do internally.
Okay. Anyone else? If there aren't any other questions, then, all in favor of accepting the report, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to new business, item 2A, consideration of ordinance 11-22-756, amending section 18-15 of the Code of Ordinances Regarding Composition of the Public Works Committee, put forth by the Public Works Committee. Is there, all right, I guess this is new business, so there's not a motion. Dan?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. This appears tonight for the first reading. We talked about this at our November 2 public works committee meeting. And of the five members that were present, this was a unanimous vote, five to zero, to advance it to city council with a recommended vote for your approval. But we are seeking to reduce the amount of members on the public works committee from nine down to seven, with two elders and five citizen representatives. We've had the two vacancies, I think, dating back to October of last year, and we currently have one member who's serving in a temporary capacity. So the changes in red that you see in the document are related to just that. There's one other item that's just a cleanup of a paragraph, and that's paragraph B, where the city engineer is crossed out, and that would be the Director of Public Works. That's just a format for the rest of the code book. But all the other changes in red are related to the request to drop from nine to seven.
If I could just address this for a minute, I have had two people that I would like to appoint, that I've been waiting for Alder Holmquist to get back to me about setting a time to discuss this. So it's not that we don't have people for these positions. It's just a matter of talking to the alder to see, to get it, and I, and also to talk about dropping the number of the committee, on the committee. So I've made several requests and have not heard from him. So, anyway, Kathy?
I just have three questions. Well, at the time, I may have more later. Of the five people who were there and voted unanimously for it, how many of those people were on the committee when there was a full contingency of nine? That's one question. Because if they weren't there when they were nine, it's hard for me to know how they could compare whether it functioned better with nine or seven. So that's one question. The other thing is, in the, in the, in the resolution, it says that it refers to the, in order for it to function more consistently, what do you mean by consistency? I mean, if someone said effectively, perhaps, if somebody said, you know, with more knowledge, but consistency is not, I mean, I don't want people to be inconsistent, but consistency is not a goal I, I look for. And that my third question is, there seems to be a lot made of what other communities around us have done. And, and I have to say with a great deal of pride, we have done it in a way that works best for us, regardless of what other communities are doing. And so that is not a compelling argument for me. So if you could tell me the benefit of the consistency, and tell me, if you know, how many of those people were there when there were fully nine members, I would appreciate it.
Well, Mr. Boyer is new, Alder DePula is new, Alder Holmquist has been on the Public Works Committee in the past. We only had five members there. We have had several occasions where we were at risk of quorum. So part of the request to drop down to seven is to drop the quorum amount down to four. So we might have an easier time making the quorum.
If I could respond to that, if you, if you don't have a full contingency of appointment, If I could respond to that, if you don't have a full contingency of appointments, you're going to have a challenge with the quorum because it requires more, and you have two people who are always going to be absent because their positions aren't filled. But I don't remember in the past, when I chaired it or when I've served on the committee, having quorum problems.
Doug? Oh, Patrick.
Yeah, I would just, my comment would be, I was at the meeting, and I would respectfully disagree with Alder Thomas regarding, you know, what other communities are doing. You know, obviously, we want to look globally what's going on and how other communities do things. Just because we've always had nine doesn't necessarily mean that it's the best way that this gets accomplished. I've served on a lot of committees in the past, you know, everything from County Health and Human Needs to City Medicine, City G, et cetera, and a lot of those committees have less people than our Public Works Committee does. So I guess, you know, again, respectfully disagreeing with Alder Thomas regarding, just because we've always done it that way, doesn't necessarily mean it's the best. And that's, that's all I got.
Nancy?
Yeah, I guess, well, first of all, I'm concerned about cutting it down, especially if we have people that have submitted, you know, applications that are qualified. And I know that that's the case, honestly. And then the second thing is, is that, you know, it seems to me perhaps more than, you know, the Public Works Committee, in my view, always has a pretty significant gravitas, which is to say, no, which isn't to say that other committees don't, but obviously, you're dealing with a lot of big projects and a lot of big decisions. And so the notion of, frankly, even if you made quorum at four, the notion of like four people, making a recommendation to this body when it comes to the bigger projects and budgets and everything that you're dealing with, makes me, I mean, I guess, in my view, that would be an argument for maintaining the current size, because it just seems like, again, if there hasn't really been an issue for quorum, if you have a full committee. And there's a, obviously, not only a certain amount of gravitas, but certainly a good amount of expertise as well, given the types of projects that you're working with. I kind of like the idea of having a few more people and not just kind of a bare minimum.
Anyone else, Teresa?
Has this committee struggled in the past to find enough expertise among the community? I don't want to just have a roomful of, you know, people, just to have people, but if their experts are out there, that sure is nice.
Until recently, we haven't had turnover, up until the past year, year and a half or so. Ms. Bussie, who is serving in the temporary capacity, I believe would like to step down once we figure out what we're going to do. So if the two are put on the committee, then we still have one open space.
We do have some other applicants too, I know. I needed to, I need to talk to Leslie, I haven't talked to her lately about it, she did agree to come back. We had some turnover on the committee.
Sure.
Last year was some illness and whatever. And then I had a member that the council voted down, who I appointed last fall, so then left that open for a while, so, yeah. And we haven't been actively looking since because there were a couple of people who look like good applicants to me, but part of the deal here is that I talk to the alder about it and get their opinion, and anyway. Doug, did you?
Yeah, I mean, in the past, I think Public Works has been one of the more sought-after committees that people want to serve on, along probably with parks and libraries and maybe public safety, but, and I know, as Dan referenced in the past, there wasn't, we didn't have any turnover, I mean, but, like, ten years with that.
We had fewer than like thirty-five years.
And so if you have a smaller number, that potentially could eventually become a bigger problem. I guess I don't have strong feelings on this one way or the other. We do have parks and public safety both have nine members, and sustainability, plan and media, community media all have eight, so for what that's worth.
Yeah. Public Works is definitely one of the heavy hitters. Anyone else?
I think Dan summarized most of the discussion at the meeting was, some of it was regarding kind of some historical perspective of, it is a committee that, for quite a period of time, had the same committee members for many, many years. And as that was beginning to turn over, I think this was one of the questions that came up, and I posed it as one of the questions of, if you're going to look at a time of making any change to a size of a committee, that that would have been the time, it's like, when there were vacancies, and that was one of the questions of like, where do we land with this? And I saw this as just the beginning of that discussion and wanted to make sure that we at least brought it up at the committee level, at least got the take from the people that were there at that moment, to be able to bring to this group and at least just have some of that discussion of, it is a committee that talks about a lot of projects that are a lot of dollars. And so there is some value in making sure that you have a good comprehensive mix of individuals on the committee. And balancing that with, do we have a read beyond the last two years of, is this, has this been an issue with the number and size versus is this a newer concern that can sort itself out? So hopefully, we can get a better gauge of that too. And Dan, I'm not sure if you're able to kind of go backwards in time some to just track how many times other quorum issues or other pieces, based on size of group.
No, other than in the past year, year and a half or so, we've, I don't believe we've ran into a quorum issue.
And you haven't had to cancel a meeting due to quorum, have you, in the past year and a half?
No. No, we came close once or twice, but we've, through people joining and people leaving, we've always had, had the five, so, yeah.
Well, we don't need to vote on this tonight, it's on for first read, so, unless somebody has something else, we'll move on to the next item. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, B, consideration of ordinance eleven dash twenty-two dash seven fifty-eight, rezoning approximately forty-six oh one through forty-seven eleven, Manona Drive, between Spring Haven Avenue and West Dean Avenue, from Retail Business District to Community Design District for the construction of a mixed-use development, and this is put forth by the planning commission. And several representatives from the Neutral Project are here, at least a couple to speak as well, if you have questions.
Yes, and good evening, everybody. I actually invited the applicants to just give a very brief overview, given the number of applications here on the agenda tonight, just so that every council member knows. So I think if we could share screen, or give them permissions to share screen, they've got a very short presentation. Thanks.
Is that you, Mark, or?
Yeah, I forgot. I rehearse every time, I forget.
Just worry about what email you have up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're not sharing the screen, you're sharing hosting.
Oh, okay, so I go to.
You can go to Nate and.
Can everyone see my screen?
No.
We're still working on that. Nate, hang on just a minute.
If you go to.
Always forget how to do it.
If you go to Nate's box up to the upper right corner, there's like three dots, and there's a window that drops down to make the post. That's the easiest way to do it.
But he wants to turn off his screen sharing first. He wants to turn off his screen sharing first.
Yeah, you got to turn off your screen share first, because it's going to be Nate who's sharing the screen.
Do you have a Nate now?
It says I'm sharing.
Go to the red box.
Can you see my screen?
And stop sharing on your computer. There you go.
Okay, there you go, Nate.
You can see?
Yep.
Awesome. I could do sign language, but this, I think, works a little better. Well, thanks for having us. We were at planning commission last week, and so this is, I think, ample timing to come in front of a city council for this project, but I'll keep it brief and give a little overview of Neutral Project, our team, and then a little bit about the project we're working on. As you can see here, we're calling it The Bloom, in honor of Blooming Grove, which this corner of Manona Drive was kind of the origination of Blooming Grove, and so that's why we're kind of paying homage to that name and calling the development The Bloom. So just a little background about us, our name is The Neutral Project, and our thesis is around sustainability. And there's two primary aspects of sustainability that we focus on. One is reducing embodied carbon emissions, and the way we do that is by using low-carbon emissions materials like mass timber. And then the second one is by focusing on reducing operational carbon emissions, and how we do that is building to passive house design standards. So just a little background on the project and site plan. So as you know, it's on the corner of Manona Drive and Dean, just kind of kitty-corner across from the high school. And we've been to planning commission, I think it was our sixth time, last Tuesday night, to kind of go through different renditions of the design, and always kind of considering the neighbors in the surrounding area, and really looking at how we can appropriately size the developments in the location it is in. So just to give you some background on the size, right now, we're at ninety-three total units, with roughly sixteen thousand square feet of commercial space. And on the corner of Manona Drive and Dean, BMO Bank is right now located there, and they will be moving back in as our anchor tenant. So this is the site plan, as you can see here, we have really nice kind of neighborhood-scale townhomes along Gordon on the backside. And then we have our two multifamily buildings on the front side, fronting Manona Drive. And then we have BMO, their new branch right here, with two drive-through lanes and one ATM. So there's just a little bit more about the project and our unit mix. The townhomes are really focused on family-supported housing, and so we're designing those as two and three bedrooms, and they have little yards in the front for, hopefully, families to have kids that play in the front yard. One other cool aspect here is we have photovoltaic solar, that's going to be on one of the roofs, and that solar is going to actually power our water heating system through a direct power source, and then our water heating will be almost completely net zero and sustainable. This is just a little bit more on massing and scale. As you can see here, we have brick on the first three stories, and then we step back the building with multiple balconies and green roofs, and we're going to have likely a metal panel or shingle on this step back on the fourth story. Just a couple more elevations. These are the townhomes, which we're actually going to relook at the townhomes when we go back for PIP approval based on a suggestion of planning commission, just looking at the facade. And then these are a few renderings of those front two buildings. As you can see, we're landscaping the surrounding area, and then we're also putting green roofs on those step-back portions of the building above. And then, as I stated before, we'll have, these townhomes are going to retake kind of a fresh look at, so when we come back for final approval of the PIP, this will likely be different, but the front building's facade will likely stay the same. And then this is just a few views and renderings of our landscaping. And so one of the things we're doing for the project is we look at different sustainability certifications for each project we do. And given the size of this project and the amount of land that we're dealing with, we thought it would be prudent to be sites certified, which is a USGBC certification similar to LEED, but it's actually more focused on the actual site and making sure that we're creating a space that's respecting our neighbors and allowing our tenants to have open space and gardens and things like that to go out and enjoy. And so we've engaged a landscape designer to work through that, and these are some of the different renderings and ideas that she's created. So this over here, you can see, is our community garden, where our residents will be able to come down and pick vegetables and things like that. And then this is those green spaces I was talking about in front of the townhomes that kids hopefully can play in. And I think that's the end of our slide. So I'll open up for questions, thanks for having us.
Doug, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Thanks, I can just frame this, this first item, which is the rezoning. And the rezoning that is before you tonight is to change the parcels, the entirety of that city block, from Retail Business to Community Design District. That request would allow the applicant to come through and utilize the planning community development framework, which just gives some greater flexibility for mixed-use developments like this, and would follow the general development plan and precise implementation plan process. And so in terms of the comprehensive plan, the 2016 plan identifies both of these, or all of these parcels, as commercial in both the current and future land use maps. The planning commission held a pre-hearing for the rezoning on August twenty-second of this year. A class-two notice was sent out as well in the local newspaper record, as well as mailed notices to adjacent property owners, and the formal recommendation was made unanimously by the planning commission on November fourteenth of this year. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions, comments? Alder, Adam McRae?
I was just wanting clarification on the role of the council this evening is strictly to vote on the zoning. We're not, we're not really here to ask questions about the Bloom project itself.
No, we have several. That will come later, I think, with the GDP.
Okay.
And we're not voting tonight, it's just the first read.
Okay.
And we're just discussing the rezoning right now.
Yes, okay.
Nancy, did you have anything to?
Well, yeah, I would just say that as Nate pointed out in his presentation, this development came in front of the planning commission, I guess it's six times, I stopped counting, but, but, and the proposed development has changed significantly as a result of all of those visits and as well as working with the neighborhood, the adjoining neighborhood. I think when, when they first came in front of us, it was much more of a box, one big box, or two big boxes, no townhomes. And, and pleased that the Neutral Projects and their whole team has worked with us over the course, and worked with the neighborhood to, in the redesign, while maintaining their commitment to sustainability.
Anyone else have any questions or comments?
Can I just say one more thing?
Sure.
I just also want to applaud them because they've maintained their commitment to the commercial at the lower level, which is, if you know anything about what's going on around town right now, you know that commercial space is really hard to fill, and so I really appreciate the fact that they are maintaining that mixed use as well.
Frank?
I would say regarding the rezoning aspect, regardless of this project or not, I think this is an appropriate rezoning for this section. It's, it's in an area of already identified within a district, and I think it's an appropriate rezoning to either move forward with this plan or any plan for the area.
Exactly. Anyone else? Okay, well, then we will move on to item C. Okay. Well, then we will move on to item C, consideration of resolution twenty-two dash eleven dash twenty-six oh four, approval of the certified survey map, CSM for block nine of the Spring Haven plat and adjoining unplanted lands, The Bloom GDP, also put forth by the Plan Commission. And this, uh, I guess Nate, did you, Nate go ahead and address that or Doug, were you?
I, I can address that. Just give a, a quick overview. I know, um, the applicant's, uh, engineer is here as well to answer any questions, uh, more of a technical nature. Uh, really this, this request though builds upon the rezoning and leads into the possible GDP. This would be the consolidation of the, the existing parcels into two lots, uh, in total. The smaller would be to the west and, uh, for the townhome developments, the ten of those facing Gordon, uh, with the, the larger of the two parcels being for the multifamily development, the commercial, as well as the surface parking as well. So there will be some easements, uh, that are documented in the, uh, the recommendation from the Plan Commission that would be needed, uh, in advance of, of any recording of those. Again, uh, a pre-hearing was, was held for this request in August of 2022. Public Works Committee unanimously recommended this at their October fifth meeting. And that was unanimous recommendation from Plan Commission on November fourteenth for this as well. Thanks.
Nate, or I'm not sure who the, who's the engineer. Um, any, anyone have anything else to add?
No. I will add though that we do have, uh, James from J C Engineering, uh, who put together the CSM for any questions, if the council has any.
Questions, anyone?
I guess just in very broad terms, what, what is the advantage of, of, of having two different, I don't know the term, two different, why not have it all just one?
So for the, in, in terms of the, the consolidation of the existing, it would be to eradicate any of the existing property lines, not to be building a, a structure over those, those existing ones. Uh, for these, I would imagine that it is sort of a separation of the two entities a little bit. Um, and maybe the applicant can speak to that a little bit more. But, um, that would be, it, it's sort of a little bit cleaner, um, from a, just from the, the process standpoint, uh, for that. And then there's, um, I, I think there would be some discussion of the possibility, um, later down the line if those were to say to be sold separately. Um, it, it sort of helps with that as well.
Yeah, well, just a quick overview on that. We're just kind of planning for the future. And since we're going through the whole process right now, it makes sense to make sure we have a plan for the next twenty years. Um, and that is that we might have that parcel be sold off separately, or we might even look at in ten or fifteen years, um, transitioning those townhomes to be for sale instead of for rent. And if we did that, we'd need this, uh, delineation in the CSM.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. It looks like there aren't any further questions about this item. We'll move on to item D, consideration of resolution twenty-two dash eleven dash twenty-six oh five, approval of the general development plan GDP for forty-six oh one to forty-seven eleven, Manona Drive, by the Neutral Project and Compass Properties, also put forth by the Plan Commission. Doug, do you want to start with this?
Yes, I can just, uh, make a start here. So this is the, um, the general development plan. This is kind of the, um, the master plan for the site that would set the, the parameters, uh, within which the applicant would return, uh, with their PIP, the precise implementation plan. Um, so the, the possible approval of this would be, um, approving kind of the, the use that is proposed, the, the number of units, parking, those types of things with the specifics, uh, to be, to be fleshed out as mentioned by the applicant as part of the PIP process. Uh, so the GDP, um, as recommended, includes eighty-three market rate units, um, within the, the two four-story mixed-use buildings. In addition, uh, there is a three-story, ten-unit townhome building that is proposed, um, facing Gordon as well. The ground floor of the, the, the main building, uh, facing Manona Drive has sixteen thousand square feet of commercial, including some tenant-only space, but anchored by the BMO Harris Bank, uh, as well at the southeast corner of the site. Uh, across the parcel, there would be a hundred and seventy-two parking spaces, um, with at-grade and underground stalls. And the addition of, um, a few different unique, um, certainly to projects in, in, in Manona, a few unique options to, uh, to lower the potential parking needs, um, of, of the project, including a zipcar, um, as well as the, the possibility of some community cars, community vehicles as well. So, uh, the commission was, was open to the discussion of that. Um, and there is even a, the, the possibility for some additional at-grade parking as, as needed, um, which helped the, the project, um, as proposed, get to, to this point. Uh, again, there are a few additional elements, including the, the sustainable building materials, the public green space as, as proposed. The majority of the massing is facing, um, Manona Drive and sort of located in, in that direction with the stepped approach, moving back towards, uh, towards Gordon Avenue, uh, really sort of fronted by those townhomes as well, giving more of a neighborhood feel to, to that street. And as, uh, Alda Moore mentioned, really listening to the, the feedback that was provided by the, um, by the neighborhood when, as this came through. Um, so just the other thing to point out, this is, um, being considered for a, um, by the CDA as well, uh, with a TIF request. And that is sort of running a concurrent path, um, that I, I just wanted to bring up. Um, so that may well be coming back before the, the council at, at, at a later date. Um, I don't know if the applicant has anything else to add at this point?
I don't think so. No, just here for questions.
Doug?
Yeah, Doug, um, as you know, this, the, kind of the issue of parking and our parking requirements comes up time and time again, every time we get a proposal at CDA, uh, not even about every time, but very often. And it's important because it's sort of, there's an interplay between how many stalls you require and how much density you can have. And I guess, um, which obviously for CDA's purposes and to try to get the most assessed value, you know, we'd like to see more, you know, more density, you know, to an appropriate amount. Um, but I, so it, it feels like maybe our parking requirements are making the projects, uh, maybe less financially viable and making it so that we, CDA, the, the city needs to provide more tip assistance. Um, this isn't really, it's obviously justified in this project, but I think in terms, I think it's relevant to the GDP here. Um, yep. Uh, has the committee considered that of what our parking requirements are and?
Yes. Uh, there's, there's certainly been feedback received on the, um, I'd say the four or five multifamily projects that are, that are moving through in various forms at, at this point. Uh, it's definitely something that we want to take a look at. Um, I would say the, the commission as a whole though has, um, moved towards, I'd say, um, greater acceptance and options, uh, that are being put forward. Um, first, as proposed by the Manona Garden project, um, the, that project down there that was recently approved. Uh, they had a sort of a overflow parking option as needed, um, at grade, um, which was kind of a, I think it was the first, uh, of its type in, in the city. And so that, I think that gave the, the commission a, a greater feeling of comfort. And a similar proposal has come forward here with, with this project. So I would say definitely, um, cost came into this project in the fact that the underground parking now follows the shape of the building. So there's limited excavation with more at-grade. And I'd say this one, just recognizing the scale, the fact that it's a full city block, they, um, they have sort of parking to the north, um, along Spring Haven that is very much, very similar to the current condition. Um, so that's sort of, it's almost street parking. There it is, um, at least half on, on private property, but a similar condition. There's surface parking, um, onsite as well as the underground. So I'd say that, that means some creative solutions, um, in the, the interim, but certainly, um, from my work plan perspective, it's something to, to look at the code, to, to see what's right for the city moving forward as well.
Okay. And with this project specifically, you're, you're counting twenty street parking stalls towards their requirement? Is that, am I understanding that right?
So they're actually located, um, at least fifty percent of the stall is located on private property.
Right.
Um, and so even though it fronts in from the street, um, it, it is technically, um, at least fifty percent of it is on private property. Uh, part of that was the fact that the applicant is putting in a sidewalk around the, the entirety of the site.
Right.
Uh, so that condition, I was, I was informed if that were removed on the northern end, the parking would be completely, um, off-street, you know, on, on private property. Uh, so there's a little bit of, uh, a discussion with that and Public Works Committee, um, approved that. And there is sort of some language to be made of a, an easement that have owing to maintenance and, and things like that. But, um, this does not have any, um, for example, parking on Gordon or anything like that that is, is counted towards the project. It's, it's all housed onsite. Good.
Nancy?
Gee, I would just say as a follow-up to that, that, um, that again, as I've pointed out, the first project where we, um, provided for a Plan B, which is to say an area, um, that we didn't require, I mean, he was, the Manona Garden project, he was below our ordinance levels too. And we identified where, if in fact he ends up needing the parking, where it would go, but we're not requiring him to put parking there yet. And the same thing is true with the Neutral Project too, where that community garden is, is the Plan B for the Neutral Project, if you will. It's needed. I would say it, it's definitely under discussion, uh, with Plan Commission as this body knows. Um, we've, as a city, we've been, um, burnt a little bit previously, being short on parking spaces in recent developments. And so there's some concern, um, at the Plan Commission level about reducing our standards, recognizing that on the one hand, things are changing and every development is different. And certainly all of the developments worth we at now are different than the development at the Riverfront, where we had a problem. Um, because, you know, it's not all eateries with a public park, um, for starters. Um, so, uh, you know, that both special events on a regular basis, et cetera. So it's a different, it's a different, um, kettle of fish, but we'll, we'll continue to grapple with it for sure.
Okay.
That's chill.
Thank you.
I just have a question about the task at hand is, we're in the first read for this general development plan. And I understand it's not a precise implementation plan. And, um, so as my role on this body, I want to make certain I understand what I would be voting for or against. And I think this is just allowing the project to...
Go ahead.
Begin, yeah, to go ahead with, without being involved in any detail. So I guess the questions that are coming up, it feels to me like we're getting into the weeds, but are we? Cause I have a couple and, I mean, I have questions as well, but I don't want to take this off into a direction that we're not supposed to go into.
I think I'd say we want to at least set some parameters, which is why the parking...
Okay.
Thank you. Is that?
Right. I mean, things like parking and, uh, and the, the overall number of units and mix of units and, um, over, you know, oh, making sure that the landscaping is thirty percent or more meets ordinance, et cetera. Those are things that are dealt with, not what's in the landscaping, you know, what trees, um, uh, but, but those are the types of things that are covered in a GDP. PIP gets much more detailed in terms of light fixtures and...
Yeah.
Plants.
Exact story, and the plants, the plants and this exact stormwater.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, so this is a perfectly appropriate time to ask questions about the overall development because it's...
Great, thank you. Then in that case, I will ask questions. Um, I, um, again, I'm just, I'm very, very grateful for our community media, uh, committee. I can't tell you the number of times that I've listened to a meeting while I was out walking my dog. So if you ever see me with the big nightclub headphones, I'm probably not listening to music, but rather a meeting. Um, in the meeting that the Plan Commission most recently had, this question came up. Um, it was, it was, it was, um, asked, um, about the number of units that would be, um, make, I don't know if I am using the correct term, but there was perhaps a market value on the, um, apartments and units versus a, a more affordable, um, accessible value. And I'm wondering, uh, if you could speak to that.
So I can, um, sort of give a little bit of background, but I'll, I'll certainly ask the applicant to, to give a little more detail there as well. So it's certainly been, um, a, a question that the commission has, has raised. And, and I would say there are different ways for affordability to, to come into the project as well. And, uh, one thing that, that has been seen here is, um, sort of, uh, the unit mix and the, the balance of those units as well, so that the absolute cost may be a little bit lower, um, for some of the studios, womb beds, things like that. Uh, but one point that was made pretty early on, um, it was asked of these, these applicants, um, would there be a workforce component or some sort of affordability, um, element to the project? And there was, I, I think, um, Nate jumped in here, it was sort of a, um, three-fold factor that, that was put into it, um, with the sustainability of the project, um, and sort of the, the materials and the, um, what was intended to be used that, that was, um, coming into the project as well. Could you talk to that a little bit more, please?
That was my, um, original question, when I think about it. Anyway.
Yeah, I can give a little background. Um, so the Neutral Project has, one of our guidelines is when we look at a development, we look at prime, three primary things. Um, the first is sustainability and how we can incorporate that into the design and construction. Uh, the second is family support housing. So looking at townhomes, three bedrooms, things of that nature. And then the third is affordability. And it's not sequential. Those are just three items that we look at. And what we find is it's very hard to have all three encompassed in one project. Um, just from a purely financial standpoint, it's very hard to make all three work. And so usually what happens is we either have affordability as a primary principle, um, and looking at going with, um, like a, a tax credit deal, um, or, or workforce housing deal. Or we can usually go with sustainability and family supported housing or just sustainability depending on the site. And so at this site, um, we decided to go from the get-go, pretty much from the, uh, impetus of the project with sustainability and family supported housing. And so that's kind of been the motto of the project since day one, and that's what we continue to have.
And if I might also add in, we did look at our affordability, um, quite a bit at the beginning of our process. And we looked at several different WIDA-type loans that restrict, um, basically certain status sides for certain income demographics. And we did look at those quite hard, um, but they just weren't working with the numbers that we needed to hit. So, um, as Nate said, we do look at that quite honestly. And it's part of something that we talk about as a firm at, at the Neutral Project.
Patrick, did you have a question?
Yeah. Have, have you, uh, created any workforce housing projects at all? Um, any of your current projects or past projects, have they incorporated any, uh, uh, affordability components?
Yeah. So, uh, we have a, it's called W Capital Group and we have a, oh, clear deal, or clear deal, that's a workforce housing, um, the tax credit deal.
So any idea of where we're coming in, uh, rent-wise at this point, uh, looking at a target? I know that you're a pro formas for the building. I'm sure you've discussed that, um, what we'll be looking at for tentative rents at this point in order to make this project work?
Yeah, we haven't set those yet because we won't open for about two years. So given where inflation is, we'll reassess about six months before opening.
Okay. And, uh, yeah, I, I think, uh, Dan County in general has, has spent a lot of time and effort, uh, working on workforce housing and, uh, affordability components. And I think that, uh, uh, it's, it's definitely a huge need in the community. And I, I was the person that asked that originally, I think, when I was still on the Plan Commission regarding the affordability component. I know we ended up talking about business competitors and that sort of thing too. But I think that, uh, at least in my opinion, uh, I know in our community, I would like to see, uh, more affordable projects. And I know that we're, uh, putting a lot of amenities in this particular project, uh, a lot of luxurious amenities into this particular project. So we're looking for a particular market demographic. And I know when you say family supported housing with three bedroom units, are those, I mean, how is that family supported? I, I guess I don't understand that definition. Family-supported units to me means something that, uh, you know, a family of four can, can afford, uh, in Manona. So I guess, can you describe that to me, what you mean by family-supported units?
Yeah, it's looking at mostly the design and then the layouts. And, I mean, usually I think developers try to focus on studios, one bedrooms and a little bit of two bedrooms. And they shy away usually from three bedrooms or even three bedrooms with dens or townhomes. And so I think with us having those type of units, we're promoting more families to join and lease from us instead of somewhere else. And then the other aspect is just having, like in one of our development... And then the other aspect is just having, like in one of our developments, we're doing or planning a daycare, or it's like a kids' club. And so things like that, the amenities that focus on kids instead of just single adults.
So if you're looking at a particular demographic, what demographic are you, are you trying to reach here?
For the family-supported housing?
Yes. Like what demographic, like what income level are you looking for here? What, what type of, what, I don't know, what are we looking at for someone to rent an apartment in this building? What do they need to make here? As a family of four? That would be affordable and have it be 33% of their, have it be 33% of their income?
Yeah, exactly. That's, that's the statistic we look at, is around 30 to 33% of their income. So once we set the rents, we'll be able to understand who could afford our three bedrooms.
So is the three-bedroom going to be $3,000 a month?
We haven't set the rents yet.
Okay. You haven't run pro formas at all with this project? That's, I guess, what I don't understand. You know, you're putting all this energy into this development, I would, I would assume that you've run some sort of pro forma where you know what we're looking, what tentatively you would need to charge for rent? No? No pro forma? No?
Yeah, our rents will be published about six months before we open the project.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Nancy?
Yeah, I guess I want to make a comment, which is, and I also made this comment at the end of the Plan Commission meeting, when we approved this, or recommended approval of this GDP. We're all very aware of the need for affordable housing here. And I'm very confident that other projects that are in the pipeline will be seriously looking at affordable housing, and will continue to look at affordable housing. And two of the last three projects that we've been, that we've approved at the Plan Commission have been affordable housing. The North Point Development, and, and also, you know, we approved the GDP for, for the project on Owen Rose, which was 50% affordable housing for Phase One. So I don't want to dismiss that as in any way, shape, or form, in terms of its importance for Menona. On the other hand, I'm, and I think the Plan Commission uniformly felt that we respected the fact that Nate was making a choice, that the Neutral Project was making a choice between having a building that is really state-of-the-art in a million ways, in terms of sustainability and quality for that corner. As, you know, as, as he said, as he sorted through, you know, what they do, as well as adding townhomes, which they said weren't there at all to begin with. You know, they, they made that choice, and obviously the Plan Commission was supportive of that choice in recommending approval of the GDP for this council. So I guess I would just respectfully ask the council to consider that expressing frustration with a developer. I mean, if you want to comment, express frustration at the Plan Commission or in it, you know, but, but kind of, just, I just want to be respectful of the developers that come in front of the city where their developments and have spent a lot of time doing that, where, again, where the Plan Commission, we've gone, we've put the developers through the paces, and, and I just want to be respectful of the fact that they made the choices that they made as, as the Plan Commission in voting unanimously to support this GDP.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I do. Nate, you mentioned that there were sort of three areas that you considered, sustainability, affordability, and I'm trying to remember the third one.
Family-supported housing.
Family-supported housing, yeah. So it sounds like sustainability is really at the forefront, which, lovely, I'm a huge fan. Is there, could you tell me, I saw, you know, you mentioned the solar raise on what I'll just call one-third of the available roof space, that may not be technically accurate. Is there a reason why more panels would not be appropriate?
Yeah, the other building we're looking at, green roofs, and so it reduces our heat island effect.
Sure.
And so if we don't do green roofs over there, we might add additional solar.
Okay.
And those, those plans are also preliminary. Once we get into PIP, we'll further kind of flesh those out.
Do you have a goal in mind, like 50% energy generation or, or above? Do you have, I mean, this is not a net-zero building, obviously, but what are you, what are your, what is your target?
Yeah, right now, we don't have a specific energy generation target, we haven't run all of our calculations yet, but our kind of broader goal is that we would have enough energy to supply the hot water heating source and have that, the solar be the only source for the hot water heating, heating energy.
Okay. And then the family-centric aspect of it, you mentioned something about, here's a grassy area where the kids could play, and I wasn't sure I quite caught that. Was it, were you just referring to the, the areas facing Gordon Avenue?
Yeah, we, we've designed areas in front of each townhome to be able to have kind of their own separate gated entrance, where they'll have a small little yard that they can actually use for whatever they want.
Okay, I didn't understand the gated part. Yeah, that makes sense now. Thank you. Anyone else?
And just a general comment for the council is, we would like to do an affordable deal, whether that's in Menona or Dane County, we're not sure, but if there's any parcels of land that the city of Menona is looking to have an affordable deal on, we'd definitely like to consider that.
Anyone else have any other questions or comments? Okay, I think we're good, thank you very much. We'll be considering these at our next meeting on December 5th.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item, E, convene in closed session under Wisconsin Statute, Section 19.85, Pren. 1, Pren.G. Conferring legal counsel for the governmental body who is running oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. This regards rescinding Section 312-3 of the Menona Court of Ordinances regarding chronic nuisance properties. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
A move to go into closed session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Would the clerk please call the rule?
Alder Wood.
Aye.
Alder Thomas.
Aye.
Alder Radamacher.
Aye.
Alder DePula.
Aye.
Alder Holmquist.
Aye.
Alder Moore.
Aye.
We are in closed session. Next item, G, consideration of ordinance 11-22-757, rescinding Section 312-3 of the Menona Court of Ordinances regarding chronic nuisance properties, put forth by myself. I'm just to suspend the rules and take this out of order.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Move, move approval.
Second.
Any further discussion, or any discussion about rescinding this ordinance? Any further questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes, thank you. All right, now we will move on to reports. Is there any updates or discussion on diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts?
Just one quick thing, I'm just missing two people's response back for Nehemiah training. So we're sending an email tomorrow, again, if you can take a look at and get back, get back to me. That'd be great, thanks.
Yeah, because we're going to be at the dates pretty soon, and we need to let Nehemiah know so that they don't book something else. Anybody else have anything about diversity efforts? I'm continuing to interview, I'm just about done interviewing people for appointment to the Implementation Committee, to implement parts of that report and the recommendations. I did talk to Bill about it, we won't, I see this as an extension of the existing ad hoc committee, but we will need to do a resolution changing the charge of the, of the committee, or adding to the charge of the committee, I guess. So we'll be bringing that at some point fairly soon, so. Nancy?
Yeah, I would just, would certainly bring this up under the next section, but it's certainly a DEI issue, and that is that the Transit Commission had its third public information meeting at the Senior Center this last week during the day. It was a good turnout, Madison Metro was there. Again, again, a lot of good questions and feedback. And the Transit Commission will be meeting in December to, to chart our next course, so to speak. It's, I would say it's very likely that we'll do another survey, community survey, and post that community, and continue to think about the routes based on the feedback and continue to work on it.
I thought we were doing a survey for sure, and that's what I've been telling people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just, we didn't formally vote on it under commission, so, but I agree with you.
That's, summer 14.
It's the next Transit Commission meeting. Anybody else have any diversity, equity items to report? Anybody have any sustainability updates? Then we'll move on to reports of committees, et cetera. Alder Radamacher, do you have anything to report? Alder Wood?
Well, I wasn't able to be at the Park Board meeting, so maybe Patrick wants to talk about it or not. Had to discuss a little pickleball.
Yeah. Oh, sorry, did you want me to talk?
Why don't we wait till your turn, Patrick? If you want to just wait a minute until Doug, are you finished?
Just two, let's see, one quick thing, I guess. But our last NPO meeting, Bill Schaefer, the Executive Director, announced that he is going to be retiring in February. He's been there, I think, 12 years. I suspect we'll get a lot of good candidates for it, but, yeah, it's too bad, because he's really good to work with for municipalities, and he's just a really good guy, very responsive and a lot of integrity, and so, yeah, he'll be missed. And I just wanted to say, I think we should all pat ourselves on the back for passing a budget. Now we have two of them, and we're done for this year, and it's a big, big deal. It's probably the biggest, it is the biggest thing we do, for sure, all year, so.
It's a very long process.
Yes, yeah, especially staff and everybody, yeah.
Thank you. Patrick?
Oh, so we had a public information session regarding pickleball, and we had a very large amount of folks show up from both Menona and the Madison area, and Cottage Grove surrounding areas, generally in opposition to reserving court time and also paying fees for use of the courts. So lots of information, and I'm sure that we'll discuss it at the next meeting, for sure. But generally speaking, the general consensus was there's definitely a huge and very passionate community out there regarding pickleball. So, but we'll discuss that at the next meeting.
Did you have anything else to report, other than that?
Other than what we discussed tonight, which was, you know, the, the main topic of our, of our meeting was the, I'm sorry, no, that's it, that's it. The only other thing that I would add is, if I could take this moment to mention that, you know, the mayor and I have been meeting with, as part of the Dane County Affordable Housing Committee, and that meets monthly for the next year, where we're doing lots of strategic planning for other municipalities within Dane County to increase the amount of affordable housing stock, whether it's on Ractify or rental housing. And we have another meeting this month yet, but we're three meetings into this strategic planning process, and we'll have more information as that comes up. So, but so far, it's been great, and it's been a good opportunity to participate.
Very, very informative meetings, that's...
Yes.
Alder Thomas?
Public safety meeting for November is canceled, one, because it's the night before Thanksgiving, and two, because there was nothing immediate attention that, that needed to be discussed by the committee.
All right. Alder Moore?
Besides the Transit Commission, which I just mentioned, again, the next meeting there is December 14th. The Plan Commission continues to, to very hefty agendas with a lot of interest in Menona, which is a very good thing. We expect that to continue to be the case, at least through the spring. So we made a decision at the last meeting that we'll be moving the Plan Commission meetings to 6:00 PM rather than 7:00 PM, starting this week, for those people that are interested, and we'll need to get that changed on the website if it's not already, so that hopefully we can get home before midnight.
Alder Holmquist?
No report.
Chief, did you have anything to report?
Thank you, under 30 seconds.
No.
Yeah.
Thank you, that's one. Thank you for the donations to the Back to Badge Initiative, we're getting there, so thank you very, very much. I can't tell you how far that goes, for not only morale, but, you know, badges are a proud symbol for us who, mainly the officers who are out there. I do this, the officers are out there every day risking their lives, so that badge and that symbol of what that means really goes a long way, so thank you. And then secondly, thank you for the Friends of the Senior Center, who I met recently at a board meeting, and their support for Shop with a Cop that's coming up. If you're not familiar with that program, it's an opportunity for police officers to be paired with kids and families who wouldn't necessarily have an opportunity to have gifts for the holidays. And so we rely on community donations for that, and so we're asking for donations, and the Friends of the Senior Center are actually helping out with soliciting for that as well. And we hope to get some families together and pair them up with officers and go out shopping, so that we can do a better job of supporting one another out here in the community. It's a great event, I've been a part of it ever since I was a cop, a couple decades ago, and continue to try to take part in it. So that's it.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Nancy, do you report?
City Clerk?
Candidate packets are available in my office, can begin circulating December 1st. Then notification of non-candidacy, if you incumbents do not want to run, is due in my office by 5:00 PM, December 23rd.
Mr. Holchak?
One quick thing with passing the property budget, it'll take about two weeks or so time we get the tax bills out, because it's usually how long it takes, that it goes to the county and they print, so don't expect them, at least two weeks.
Okay. Other than that, all I have to add is, I'd like to wish everybody Happy Thanksgiving Holiday, and we'll see you all back here in December.
Mary, is it, am I correct in remembering that the voter turnout for Menona was 88%?
Yes, it was 88%, right.
Wow.
Yeah, it was amazing. Nancy?
Yeah, I just, haven't we traditionally done some sort of a holiday potluck?
There will be something on, I just heard about this morning, is it December 15th?
Yes, Thursday. It's December 15th, we'll send a notice out to everybody.
It's like a holiday potluck luncheon at the Holiday Center.
Yeah, I just, I thought we had done something, and I was like, aren't we out of COVID?
That was pre-COVID, yeah. I think staff is looking forward to that, definitely. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.